Good evening. It's seven o'clock. I think we've got a pretty nice crowd here. I just want to welcome you and just run over a few guidelines. We're going to try to stick to a pretty, pretty close schedule that we have printed up. And the main open part will be a question and answer period after the board members deliver their presentations about the different scenarios as far as what they might do under this Act 46. So we're going to have a few presentations. Start off with Stephanie Amiao is going to open, give you an overview of what's going on here. She's the chairman of the Jamaica Board. Then Emily Long and Oliver Olson, our two state reps, are going to give a good presentation on what where Act 46 is at this point and hopefully really enlighten us as to where that is, where it might go and so forth. And then we'll go on down through from there. So at this time, I think I'll turn it over to Stephanie and she can open the meeting.
Hi, everybody. Welcome and thanks for coming out tonight to our school board meeting. As he said, I'm Stephanie Amiao. I'm the Jamaica School Board Chair. And I'm going to have our school board members introduce themselves.
I'm Tom Tilbert. I'm a Jamaica resident, Cliff in East Jamaica.
I'm Amber Burnham.
Anne Rennell.
Heather Ann Beck.
Peter Baris-Videx.
Before we do anything else, I wanted to start by dispelling a couple of rumors which have been causing a lot of anxiety. I'm sure there's more than two, but we'll start there. First, absolutely no decision has been made by anyone, not even remotely. So let's just start there. This is a meeting about to share and listen and learn from each other. And secondly, no changes of any kind are going to be implemented by next fall. So this is for better or for worse, this is going to be a long process and we'll talk more about that in a minute. Now I want to let the folks who've come here tonight to answer your questions, help answer your questions about Act 46 and choose themselves.
Oliver Olson, State Representative for Jamaica. I'm Lundy Derry Stratton, West End, New Haven.
Emily Long, I'm the State Representative for Newfane. I represent Townsend, Newfane, and Marlboro. And I'm also on the House Education.
Stephen Morris, I live in Newfane and I'm Chairman of the State Board of Education in freshman meeting, all-day meeting today.
I'm Bud Devonis. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union.
And I'm Stephen John, Superintendent Schools. There is a rumor that is true, that I'm retiring June 30th, 2016. Sorry I'm going to miss some of this adventure, but I am readily available to poke whatever at and ask good questions and try to get some straight answers. I did want to just take opportunity to introduce a future Superintendent Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, Mr. Bill Anton. Bill, you want to stand up? I'm the principal of Doge.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Ralph.
Better wait till after the meeting.
We also have our representatives on the Leila and Gray Board here tonight, Heidi Dixon and Bruce Carlman. We have obviously Laura Heiser, our JBS Principal, and Durin Dorfman, Leila and Gray Principal, and there are mentioned Bill. And there's a number of school board members from some surrounding towns who've come tonight also to help answer any questions that they could help about their process. Okay, we invited the Jamaica community here tonight because we wanted to have a conversation as a town about how we can and should respond to Act 46. As you can see on your agenda for the evening, Emily and Oliver are going to give a brief explanation of the law. Dr. Dorfman is speaking tonight about Leila and Gray because an eventual vote for choice should we have one would have an impact on our current high school and its students. We will then take general questions for any of those folks before moving into a discussion of each of the four submitted scenarios that have emerged so far as possible responses to the law. Our goal tonight is to have a healthy discussion as a town, set out accurate information, and ultimately to create study committees to consider each option's pros and cons and potential consequences. On the last page of your packet, Chris, you will find a place for comments and questions and especially committee sign-ups. On your way out the door, you can rip off that last page and drop it. There's a little tub there where you can put it in there. And if you need to leave early, you can use that, drop it in there on your way out also. Jamaica is lucky that we've had for a long time, had an active and responsive school board. And a number of us here tonight have been on the board for several years. When we first came on the Red Committee, if everyone remembers that, was in full swing. And they had an informational meeting here in Jamaica, which was very well attended. And at that meeting, we as a board felt we received pretty clear instructions from the community that we wanted us to explore all the options out there in an effort to keep the most educational opportunities available to our kids as efficiently as possible for our taxpayers. And we've been working really hard to fulfill that direction. And after the Red Committee disbanded, we started meeting with Townsend about possible collaboration ideas. In particular, we worked on the idea of a potentially new elementary school which might have been able to offer expanded programming at a reduced cost. We were working on that. We approached two other boards, invited them to join the conversation. They declined, but we kept meeting with Townsend basically until the passage of Act 46 changed the playing field and we just paused to see what changes the Act might bring. And since then, we've been studying the Act. We've been attending meetings and retreats and eventually, over the months, some ideas have begun to take shape. It's been kind of a relief to have concrete ideas finally come out after months of vague suggestions. And all around us, I think we're starting to see other towns also starting to move forward a little more concretely into exploratory committees. One of the most important things we want to communicate tonight is that the Jamaica Board does not have a position on any of the scenarios that we are presenting tonight, not a formal position, not an informal position. We are simply presenting the options that we see in the hopes of answering questions and hearing from Jamaica residents about what your values are as a town and what path or paths you would like to consider further for our children's education. As a board, we've been hearing for many years from residents who wish that Jamaica had choice at some level. We've seen a few families move out of town in order to get that choice for their kids. And we know that it's going to be a controversial and potentially painful conversation, but we just could not in good conscience as elected representatives leave it off the table for consideration. We have been approached by, about it so often by many varied Jamaica voices. So we really thought we needed to bring it out and talk about it. So at the risk of being redundant, let me repeat, we have, the JBS Board has no agenda except to facilitate a respectful conversation, listen to our residents, and maybe most importantly, form study committees made up of Jamaica community members and eventually, long-term, help create an article for Jamaica to vote on. We are continuing the work you set us two several years ago to be open-minded and consider all options that might provide the best educational opportunity for our kids. Before I turn this over to Emily and Oliver, I wanted to just talk briefly about our timeline. It looks like the earliest we might possibly have an actual vote would be November and it could be later than that. But we do hope to have the study committees reporting at least initial progress back to our February board meeting. And with any luck, we'll have more to say at Town Meeting Day about some of the progress that they've made. And our board just voted right before we opened this part of the meeting to apply for a small study grant from the state so that our committees can have help from a consultant in seeking some of the more, you know, detailed information and interpreting it. So the good news is that we have some time for thoughtful discussion and research and planning. Nothing's going to happen immediately, so we can breathe easier and take the time to make some wise decisions with, I hope, a long-term perspective. Thank you for listening and participating tonight. And I'm going to hand it over to Oliver and Emily.
And we'll turn it over to Oliver and Emily for them. All right. So we already handled the introductions. So Emily and I are going to sort of tag-team a few slides that we have. I'm sorry, am I standing in the way? I'll come back here. Emily and I are going to tag-team through some slides that really came out of a much bigger presentation that I've done. As many of you know, I've been doing a number of forums on Act 46 really throughout the region. To really do Act 46 justice, it requires two hours. Emily and I are going to try to give you the Cliff Notes version in about 15 minutes. So it's really hard to do. Just a quick show of hands, how many folks have been in one of my Act 46 presentations? Wow, okay, pretty good. So, well, I'm really glad that I, because that would make this a lot easier. I just want to say I'm happy to do more of these presentations. I've lost count how many that I've done. But speaking of dispelling sort of myths out there, I read in a paper somewhere that I was highlighted as the architect of Act 46. And that is, it's far from, far from the truth, since I don't even actually serve on the House Education Committee. But it's an issue that is near and dear to my heart, education. There's nothing more important than the future of our children. And now this whole region is incredibly fortunate. You've got Emily Long, although she doesn't represent Jamaica, she represents this region. She does so incredibly well, brings a wealth of expertise, serves on the House Education Committee. We've got Stephen Morris just down the road in Newfane as the Chair of the State Board of Education. So this region is incredibly well-represented. So I'm going to very briefly skim through some high-level context and background. So the first, you know, question I get is, you know, how much do you spend as a state on education? And the answer is it's about $1.5 billion. And it grows, it's been growing every year for quite some time. We're now at a point where we have the highest spending in the country by a number of measures. And when we look at the percentage of our K-12 education spending as a percentage of gross state product, we're number one in the nation at 5.2% compared to the U.S. average of 3.4%. Yet we continue to see costs increasing across the state. So this, you know, these are millions of dollars, hundreds, and then we get up into billions of dollars. And then the red line here represents our enrollment. So we have been seeing as many of you have heard, significant declines in enrollment, yet our staffing levels statewide have remained consistent. So if you think about education, staffing is an incredibly important part of that. It's 80% of the cost, the total cost of education. So we now have the lowest staff-student ratio in the country at about 4.67 to 1. This chart, by the way, came from the Vermont Agency of Education. And just as an exercise, if we were to round that up to 5 to 1, we'd save about $74 million annually, which is equivalent to about 7 cents tax rate. So one of the challenges we've been having as a state is as we've seen a declining enrollment because our taxes are a function of the cost per student. So as you see declines, if your staffing levels remain constant, your cost per student goes up, your taxes go up. That puts pressure to cut programs, cut staff. And what we're finding is in a lot of communities across the state, we have increasing inequity that has developed across the school system, particularly at some of the rural areas. And that's quite stark when you compare more urban areas versus rural areas in terms of the amount of programming that they can provide. So demographics, you know, it's not just an issue with kids. It's a phenomenon that we're seeing across the state. We are aging as a state and there are broader implications in terms of the number of, basically, our tax base. So this chart here came from an economist of the state of Vermont and it sort of projects, you know, the various sort of age groups. And you can see these bumps here. Each one of these lines represents an age group at a point in time. And you can see that, you know, these are effectively your baby boomers who are moving, you know, into retirement and beyond. And there are two things that happen there. One is these are folks moving on a fixed income, so they're moving out of their prime earning years. And then as they, you know, get into their 70s and 80s, we see increasing pressure on our human services programs. So it's a bit of a double whammy as we look out 10 or 20 years ahead of time, which from a statewide perspective gives us a lot of concern. So that's a little bit of context in terms of the fiscal and the demographic pressures that we're facing as a state. Act 46 is a response to that. I voted for Act 46. I support Act 46. And I do self-conscious of the fact that there are many things in there that are, that are not very popular. And quite frankly, it's really easy for, you know, for politicians to sit back and simply vote no and point the finger. But at some point, you know, folks need to step up and as a state, we've got to face these challenges. We've got to face them head-on. And it's going to require some really difficult decisions and some difficult conversations. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Emily, who's going to walk through some goals within Act 46.
Thank you, Oliver. What I didn't say when I introduced myself earlier is that I am a current school board member at the Leila and Gray Board. I'm also a 21-year veteran of the school boards. So I used to serve on the Newfane School Board many years ago. I think I was elected in 94. And I've moved on from there to Leila and Gray. I think I've been there 16 years. So I don't come about into this without some background and context. And I think maybe the first time I remember having a serious conversation about what our future looks like in our education system in Vermont, our public education system in Vermont, was back here in Jamaica School when Commissioner Kate Kingtown, I can't remember the year and maybe you remember Oliver, I don't know. I can't remember the exact year, but it was here in Jamaica where he held one of his meetings that he was holding all around the state. And he was proposing changes to our governance system back then. We chose to not take action then, but that was sort of on the beginning curve of where we were looking at what was coming down the road. We knew things were going to be changing. We could see the projected enrollments lowering. And so this has been a long conversation. It didn't just happen really quickly. So I am on House Ed. I did, of course, vote for this law. Part of the reason why I tell you that I voted for the law and why I was so engaged in the conversation was because I wanted to make sure that local communities had a voice in what they wanted their schools to look like. And you have that option in this law. And I am so thrilled to see a room full of people like this because clearly you're all engaged in what you want it to look like. So that's the goal. That's the key, making sure that communities are engaged. So the goals of Act 46 are, you'll see them in front of you, they essentially cover three main areas: equity, quality, and efficiencies. So the other piece is about transparency and accountability. I won't read them all out for you, but I think it's important to note that it's very important for us in this law to provide equity in the quality and variety of educational opportunities. We want to lead students to meet or exceed the education quality standards. And if you're not familiar with those, you should go on the Agency of Education's website. You'll see them there. They're very comprehensive. They're new, passed by the State Board of Education, I think two years ago. And so that's a huge part of this law. And then maximizing operational efficiencies through greater flexibility to manage, share, and transfer resources with the goal of increasing district-level student-to-staff ratios and then promoting transparency and accountability. So that is the key at the bottom, is delivering a cost value by parents, mothers, and taxpayers. It provides, it's a catalyst, providing incentives for local communities to drive the change. That's the piece that I think is so critically important. I think it's missed a little bit. There's been a lot of talk about whether there's too much flexibility in this law. But I'll tell you, I support it. I support every bit of the flexibility, even though it requires a huge amount of effort on the part of boards, school boards around the state, as well as communities. There are going to be a lot of meetings going on. There already are a lot of meetings going on around the state. Conversations happening. I think they're unprecedented. I don't remember any time in my 21 years as a school board member. And I'll tell you, my father was a school board member too, and he was on Newfane Board where we changed our high school systems into union high schools along with Ralph. He served with Ralph Coleman down on the Leila and Gray Board for years. And we're still having conversations. This one, I think, is one of the most important ones we've had in a really long time. And that is, what do we value about our public education system and how can we improve that equal access by our students to the educational opportunities? And that has been something that's been changing over the years. We are finding that the harder it is in school districts to provide the education, we are seeing a reduction in our ability to increase our budgets. And when we can't increase our budgets, when we have to make cuts, where do we cut? We cut programs. And that, we've been doing it, not in a real bad way yet here, but we are also seeing enrollment, especially at the high school, continuing to decline. I think it's 20% around the state where enrollment has declined. So we're still addressing that. So, yeah, and I just, quick mention about the representation on, so you can read what's on here. I think if there's questions about the way the law is implemented, we'd be happy to answer them until we get into too many vehicles around because it's very nuanced and fairly complex.
Okay. So just a few visuals, because I'm sort of a visual person. I, you know, there's lots of words in the law and people read through the law, including myself, and your eyes sort of glaze over. So I think visuals are really important. And there's really, really two different paths, you know, when you strip away all the complexity. There are two different paths that Act 46 is taking us down. And one is a merger. So our current sort of structure across the state is we have a, we typically have supervisory unions and then we have, within a supervisory union, a number of school districts. And the two paths, and this is the, one of the two paths under Act 46 is to unify all of these boards and the supervisory union into something known as a supervisory district. This is a model we're more likely to see in more urban areas. So some of the mergers you've heard about that were voted on recently or will be coming up for votes within the next year are these, you'll hear about these accelerated mergers, et cetera. They're going down this path. They have relatively small geographic areas. They don't have too many school districts. They're all sort of doing the same thing. So it's, this is a very easy transition for them.
It's also, I don't need the microphone, but it's also a model that's often happening under, with school districts that don't have, or supervisory unions that don't have choice.
Yeah. And where things get a little bit complicated is, and particularly in the more rural areas and down our state, we have, I happen to represent two towns and two different supervisory unions that happen to be the two most complex supervisory unions in the state. The number one most complex is the Bennett and Rotten Supervisory Union. They have every combination of school district you can imagine. So trying to get, you know, 15 different school districts that all have different government structures into one unified entity is just, is not a possibility. And the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union is not quite as complex, but it's still incredibly complex.
You have a joint board, though?
Yes. You do have a joint board. You don't have, you don't have, you don't have a relationship with New York State, though.
That's true.
That interview. So this is, you know, this, for this part of the state, and in fact, the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union already took that first option off the table. They've made a decision as a supervisory union, but they're not going to go down that path. So for all intents and purposes, it really, this is the slide to focus on. And the basic concept is that supervisory union or supervisory unions will remain in place with a smaller number of boards underneath that. And the law calls for the smallest practicable number of districts. So the, you know, the typical scenario in Wyndham Central or the Bennett and Rotten Supervisory Union is you merge basically like with like. So if you're a school district that operates a K-6 elementary school and has choice 7 through 12, and there's another one with a similar thing, there's a logical pairing there. Where another, two other districts might operate K through 8 and then have a union high school together, there's a natural pairing there. So then you can basically get down to a smaller number of boards. And the concept behind all of this is ultimately with a smaller number of boards, the general, you know, objective here is to have a board that's looking after multiple schools and looking at a pre-K through 12 system of education. So they're following those kids, you know, throughout their lifespan within the schools and also provides a lot more flexibility within the system to, you know, to respond to these demographic challenges that we're talking about. Emily, did you want to turn it?
I was just going to say, it's, you were heading down the path of saying, but it's to be able to share more resources, more readily share resources across buildings. And that will make a big difference for us.
So one example, a common example cited, there was a recent merger of, and I forget the exact districts, but it was Bolton, Bolton School District and Chittin and, Chittin and East. And, you know, they had separate boards, they were doing their own thing, and they had, they had different challenges. So Bolton was a relatively small school. They were struggling with declining enrollment and trying to, trying to figure out how to work with that challenge. Essex had a slightly different problem. They actually had, in one of their grades or two of their grades, they had more kids and they had spots available. And they were, they had this choice of So if you're a school district that operates a K through six elementary school, has choice seven through 12, and there's another one with a similar thing, there's a logical pairing there, where another, two other districts might operate K through eight, and then have a union high school together, there's a natural pairing there. So then you can basically get down to a smaller number of boards. And the concept behind all of this is ultimately with a smaller number of boards, that the general, you know, objective here is to have a board that's looking after multiple schools and looking at a pre-K through 12 system of education. So they're following those kids, you know, throughout their lifespan within the schools, and also provides a lot more flexibility within the system to, you know, to respond to these demographic challenges that we're talking about. Emily, did you want to turn in?
I was just going to say, it's, you were heading down the path, I was saying, but it's to be able to share more resource, more readily share resources across buildings, and that will make a big difference for us.
So one, one example, a common example cited, there was a recent merger, and I forget the exact districts, but it was Bolton, Bolton School District, and Chittenden, Chittenden East. And, you know, they had separate boards, they were doing their own thing, and they had, they had different challenges. So Bolton was a relatively small school, they were struggling with declining enrollment, and trying to, trying to figure out how to work with that challenge. Essex had a slightly different problem, they actually had, in one of their grades, or two of their grades, they had more kids and they had spots available, and they were, they had this choice of, they were trying to figure out, do we hire another teacher? Well, the two boards got together, and they have since decided to merge, and under a merged structure now, they have two schools, and they actually were able to go to parents in Essex who happened to live close to Bolton and say, hey, listen, we've got extra room in a couple of these classrooms in Bolton, would you, would you mind having your kids go to the Bolton School instead of the Essex School? And the parents were like, yeah, that makes, that makes total sense for us, right over the line. And they went over, and by doing that, they're able to keep the Bolton School operational, they're able to fill those empty seats, and avoid hiring an extra teacher in the Essex School. So everybody comes out, you know, comes out ahead in this scenario. The kids are getting access to a great education, and they're able to do the set of costs and tax fares before. Yeah. Anything else, Emily?
Sure.
Okay. Great. That's it for our slides.
Thank you all, Laura and Emily. Our next presentation is going to be given by Dr. Dorin Dorfman, LGUHS principal, and she's just going to kind of give us some information as far as, I believe, what impacts might, how it might impact Leland and Gray, and hopefully a good information session. Thanks.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'd like to also introduce Annie Landenberger, who teaches English and is our theater advisor, theater director, and Sarah Berger is also an English teacher and our literacy coach, and French teacher, I'm sorry, fresh back from Montreal. I would like to just point out a couple of items in the handout. There were a few extra copies in the back, I'm not sure if we've run out, that I'd like to share with you. There's a lot of information packed in here and much more that can be shared. There is more detailed information in the Leland and Gray booklets that we use when we recruit students from China, and you're always welcome to go to the Leland and Gray website, which is the most comprehensive of all. There are just a couple of highlights I wanted to share. First, on the top right of the page, on the front page, it lists some of the colleges that students who grew up in Jamaica were accepted to for, in college, since 2011. So it's a limited list that's represented there, everything I could squeeze into that corner, and there are more too. And you may have seen the statistics before that are listed here, comparing Leland and Gray standardized test scores, the most recent we have available, to the four Vermont academies. And then on the reverse side of the sheet, there is mention of, if you look at around the middle right here, about pre-K-12 alignment. And this is something important to emphasize, because I think the, in large part, the success of Leland and Gray graduates, despite maybe obstacles at home, obstacles of, that sometimes you're faced in living in, not in metropolitan area, that we can overcome at Leland and Gray because of the pre-K-12 alignment. For example, sorry. For example, we have a K-12 math committee, Laura's in fact the chair of that committee, co-chair with a Leland and Gray math teacher. There's a literacy committee that has worked together for many years, and there is a seventh grade, five through eight, science committee, so that there's seamless alignment. We also are beginning to share staff in counseling, a school social worker, so that we can continue interventions pre-K through 12 as they need to, as developmentally appropriate for the increasing mental illness that is affecting Vermont and the rest of the country. And so this alignment of services that I think is key to the well-being and academic success of our students in our school district. And I was just talking about kind of the beginning and the continuity, but I'm going to let Annie speak to the other end when they get to be seniors.
Hi, Annie Landenberger. I'm in my 20th year at Leland and Gray, and the proud mother of three alums. And I'm very fortunate, I get to see kids from seventh to 12th grade, because many of our students are involved in the theater program. With a great stroke of good planning, I have all seniors in the fall semester, I'm the only senior English teacher, but the design of that is that I'm then able to help them through all of the college application processes to augment what our counseling office is doing. And we have a great college counselor, but I'm able to be there in support of their applications, from the questioning of what should I do, and where should I look, and what do you know about this school, or that school, which our kids ask many of our faculty. But we go primarily, we focus a lot on the college essay, which if you have any kids go through this process, you know that that's really key. So it's part of the in-class writing, I mean, writing's writing, and I'm a writing nut, and I'm a grammar nut, so we just assign the Common Application essays as part of their assignment, both in English 12, which is World Literature, Sophocles, Avonigat, and then AP Literature and Composition, which is a class of nearly 20 kids this year. So we kind of see them through, and then we also help with the financial aid applications. Our kids are very blessed to get many great financial aid packages. And so that's where we take care of it, the other end of the spectrum. A lot of one-on-one, once an essay is drafted, and they decide that it's the essay, and three or four that they draft, then we meet one-on-one during my prep time and lunch to really hone it down. So that's what we do, to get them into life after Leland and Gray. Thanks.
One last highlight I wanted to point out because of the geographic location of Leland and Gray, that I think makes it quite exceptional. I've worked at a few other schools in Vermont, and never before did we have such access about, two-thirds of the way down, middle of the reverse side, where it talks about the full services for the whole child. There are students who come to school, and they can just walk down the street to Grace Cottage and see whatever medical practitioners or therapists that they need to. So it is a tremendous convenience for families who otherwise might not be able to access the services for their children. There was a problem identified a few years ago about students' lack of access to dental care, and we were able to partner with West River Family Dentistry, who now see our students free of charge, and we receive donations to cover their costs. So at this point, because I know we have limited time, I'm going to turn over to Sarah, who has made a short video, I'd say it's, you know, it's not a professional video, but it's what we could bring you tonight.
Thanks. So you guys don't get your hopes up, this was filmed on iPhone and done in iPhone. And you'll see, there's a lot of alumni in this video, the outpouring from alumni was incredible, and there's a lot that we weren't able to include in this because of time constraints, but I probably have four or five times the amount of footage, it's just alumni talking about Leland and Gray. So without further ado.
The way that I see Leland and Gray fostering academic excellence would be through our, excellence would be through our various academic programs and the activities that kids do in class.
At Leland and Gray, I was always pushed by my teachers, they always wanted me to achieve more than I thought I could achieve, and it was because I was doing so well in those classes that I decided to become a math major.
The science program at Leland and Gray is really great. It helps me decide that I wanted to be a biochemistry major in college, and that's what I'm doing now. It's really hard, but I was prepared very well for it in school.
Our Chinese program is very challenging.
Leland and Gray has been the only authorized AP Chinese school in the entire state of Vermont.
When we think about our athletic program here and its excellence, we think about the opportunity that our kids have to play with tremendous coaches.
The teams, the teams really supported each other. It helped us win a lot of state championships, it was a lot of fun.
But combined, we have over 50% participation from boys and girls in our school.
I started playing sports because the teachers are such a part of it, and they are.
Oh, you can do, you can do anything.
They just offered so many different after-school programs, like there's our environmental program, like the LEAF program, and you went out into the community, and we guarded, and it really brought people together.
Part of the music program, and as a part of musical ensembles in particular, you really, the students can develop a real sense of camaraderie.
Felt like the school had a lot of camaraderie.
It was also easy to support the athletes of the team, because we pretty much knew everyone at school.
We believe here at Leland and Gray, our athletic program is very strong, our students have great opportunity to participate, and our community plays a huge role in what our athletes do here at the school.
My teaching style puts students' individuality as a priority.
I'm individual, and I really, I felt like they promoted that, they really helped me be the person I am today.
One of my advisors said, we don't really have to worry a lot about prejudices or puts, we're not that kind of school.
Another thing that I always said in my high school is that when you get to know everyone, it's much less of a problem with kids following or alienating other people. I enjoyed going to Leland and Gray a lot, and I would not be disappointed if I had to go to school.
Our next segment is going to be, hopefully about a 10 to 15 minutes at the most, of general questions from the Jamaica community regarding Act 46. And I would like to keep it, if you ask a question, I want to wait till we get around the room, and everybody that wants to has asked a question before we go back to that person, and hopefully we can, can make them fairly, you know, to the point, and regarding Act 46, we get some good answers, and then, then we're going to move in after that, a presentation from the Jamaica Board on the different scenarios relating Act 46. So it's now your time to open up, if you've got some questions, you know, concerning Act 46, shoot, and then hopefully later, there'll still be a little time for questions after the presentations have been made. That was great. Yes. Yes, great.
So we discussed dwindling numbers in the state, and we have some dwindling numbers here in our area. If we make a decision to stay as we are, merging boards, which I think seems like that's, you know, an easy route and a comfortable route, what guarantees do we have that our schools will still be able to stay open and functioning in the next few years? Are there guarantees?
So I'll be happy to answer. So I don't think anybody would be right to tell you there's any guarantees about anything. With or without Act 46, I think we're all going to be dealing, or many of us are going to be dealing with the challenges that we're facing with declining enrollment. When Oliver mentioned about the school up in Bolton, they really were facing whether they were going to close or not. We have a local school that did close Brooklyn. Their tax rates are going up quite a lot, they made a decision in their community to close their school and merge with New Brook. So there's no guarantees with or without 46. I will say, though, that, and I think this is somewhat of a misconception out there, misconception of the law out there, there are abilities to preserve the choice to close your school, to keep it within the community. So at the, when the five towns that feed into Leland and Gray went through their red process, they had an article of agreement, one of the articles, in the articles of agreement said that no, no school would close without a vote of the community. So that was one of the articles of agreement approved by the State Board of Education, that's still allowed, that does, I think, in some ways help. I just will quickly say that I think part of the conversations we had, and much, much of the testimony we heard, was around school closing last year, and it sounded to us, and we've seen it several times, that schools aren't closing anyway. This may be an opportunity, such as was in Bolton, to keep schools open.
Well, I'm just curious, if we go through the, as I said, we make these decisions, are we having, going to have this conversation again in five, 10 years? Because the dwindling numbers are forcing us to close the school anyway.
And it's absolutely possible, I mean, there's, there are no, there are no guarantees in, you know, particularly when it comes to declining enrollment, and we could start to see that decline taper off, it could accelerate, you know, we can only project so far out in the future. But again, you know, back to that Bolton example, you know, one of the struggles we have right now is we have, you know, 275-plus school districts across the state running their own schools, and it's really hard for them as a small district, you know, they don't have a whole lot of options. So you end up in this binary, do we close or try to keep it open? Whereas if you're part of a larger district, you can now start to explore more creative options. So, you know, maybe you make a decision that you partner with another town within that same district, and that, and the board looks at, you know, maybe we don't want to operate all grades in both communities, but maybe we can operate some grades in one community and other grades in another community, and gain some economies of scale that way. So I think there's just going to be a lot more flexibility.
Can I add just a little bit? The legislation specifies, the beauty of this piece of legislation is it's a real Vermont piece of legislation. The local localities are making the decisions. There's certain criteria that's set up for, to guide you through this process, but it's really the towns, the school districts that are making the decision. The legislation makes it very clear, it's not the intent of the legislation to close small schools, that's a local decision. In fact, this so-called Small School Grant continues in this legislation, it's now called a merger grant, I believe. But the important thing is, if a, if a school has to close, no one in Montpelier, as of right now, legislature could change that, but as of right now, you are making that decision here in the community.
Thank you, Steve. Another question?
Yes.
Just a second, what is actually the timeline for the decisions? I mean, I know we have a fair amount of flexibility, but is there a backend date that says, okay, at this point?
2019.
I think we can work it, I think we can work it out, yeah.
But what Stevens referred to is, at 2019, if you just sit back and do nothing, the Secretary of Education will put forth a recommendation to the State Board to consider and to finalize, to basically move districts, merge districts into other districts. So if you haven't gone through the process voluntarily, the State Board is going to do it for you.
My term expires in 2017, so.
Yes, Amy.
So if there's one unified school board that's created, how would the Jamaica Village School be represented?
If, you said if one board is created, how would Jamaica be represented?
The, let me give a, we had a State Board of Education meeting today, and we actually approved three Act 46 or consolidations under, under the new legislation. And there's beginning to develop a trend. Obviously, there's a proportional representation on, on the new board, based on the population, based on the most recent census. But what, the trend that I'm beginning to see happen is, yes, Jamaica might have one representative, towns might have one representative, same for Newfane, but then there's some at-large elected representatives from the whole district. And it seems to me that really does consolidate and bring the district together a little more than having each little entity be proportionally represented. Some, some areas are looking at it as, as the supervisory union board is now, where each town would have proportional representation based on your, your population. So again, it's your choice on how, how that would be done, it's not dictated to you from the top.
Thank you. Thank you.
Patty.
That's interesting because I've always been told that it's one person, one vote type thing. So now they are allowing an at-large person to be elected, and they can be from any of the towns that are involved. It's not necessarily...
I think there's actually been some proposals where, in fact, I know there was one where they're all elected at-large, but there's designee from certain towns. One of the districts we did today, I think, was Addison Central. And I think they were elected all at large. But the town of Brandon, I may be mixing things up here. The town of Brandon had a certain number of representatives, but they were elected by the voters in the whole district. So that's another way of doing it. There's some, the point is, there's some choices, and they're your choices. They're not being dictated to you by Montpelier. Or by the legislature, even.
Thank you. Yes, John.
I noticed that three of the Jamaica responses to Act 46 involve some form of choice. I was wondering, who pays for the transportation if kids choose to go to a school out of their town?
John's question is, if we do go to some sort of school choice, who pays for the transportation for kids to go to another town?
I really came to listen tonight, so I'm talking way too much. Again, that's your decision. If you choose to set up a district that allows choice, the district could take on the expense of travel. Or you could simply say, yeah, we'll send your kid and pay the tuition to X school and figure out how to get him or her there. So it's really your decision.
So the parents would have to pay the transportation?
Not necessarily. I mean, you could adopt a district where you provide the transportation. Some are doing that.
Thanks, John. Oliver, do you have a comment?
I just want to add to that, that historically, transportation and where it's designated and provided can change over time. I come from Marlboro. I once drove the bus to Whitingham. That's not happening anymore. So, you know, I'm just saying that this can change based on need and based on the board's decision. Obviously, in a larger board, it has to take, you know, a broader catchment. But there's no obligation of the law to actually provide transportation. But, you know, nobody's going to think it's a wise idea to have everybody run around their cars doing their own thing. At least if we want to cut down on pollution.
Yes, Patty. Well, I'd like to take, I'd like to take other questions if there are before I come back to one. Any other, some new, any other questions from someone else? Yes, Greg.
I spoke of Brookline shutting down their school. Have they found savings?
Have there been savings?
Just for information sake, yeah.
Yes. Brookline, Newbrook has the lowest, has the highest student-teacher ratio and therefore the lowest per pupil cost and therefore the lowest tax rate within the WCSU. They also favorably have an increased learning opportunities provision for counseling, nurse, P.E., art for all the students from the combined towns than they did previously when Brookline was separated. Add a cost savings. It's really a matter of how many students are in a class. That's our big driving cost in education.
But it's also important to remember that Brookline did make a decision to close their school, so...
I just wanted to know what's being possibly promised actually is happening in reality.
Well, we had that example in WCSU. I can't say, I can't guarantee what would happen elsewhere. They were able to have a facility that was combined, and that, of course, makes it a lot easier.
And I think, Greg, the other thing to point out is the savings didn't just accrue to Brookline, they accrued to Newfane as well. So Brookline and Newfane, both towns together, have the lowest tax rates within the area of towns. Because what they were able to do is they had, basically, they had empty seats at the Newfane Elementary School. So they were able to move the kids from Brookline, fill those empty seats, and that reduced the cost per student for both towns and lowered their tax rate for that.
Maybe this is repeating what's been said several times, but from the State Board of Education's point of view, yes, schools and education will save some money through this legislation eventually. But the main motivation from the State Board's point of view is to make sure that we're providing an equitable educational opportunity to all students in Vermont. We're not doing that today. This legislation will really help us do that.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Someone else with a question? Yes.
Hi. I just have a question. You just used the term "empty seats." And so I'm wondering what that means as far as student-teacher ratio? Would a district decide what their capacity? Or is that predetermined? Does that make sense?
Our question was what the term meant, "empty seats." And I think, yeah, from... I think what it is, is from where they are now up to an optimal. But let me turn it over to someone who had to go.
So it's a symptom of sort of our decline in enrollment. So for, you know, if we look across statewide, our education system, if we keep our staffing levels relatively stable, but we see a decline in enrollment, that's one thing that impacts the staff-to-student ratio and why do we have such a low staff-to-student ratio? But what's happening in that scenario is you have classrooms where there are literally empty seats. There are classrooms that have room for students. And Stephen can speak more authoritatively to what played out in Newfane and Brookline. But my understanding is they, within one school, they had a number, they had a capacity that they were able to leverage. So keeping relatively stable staffing numbers, but increasing the number of students, you increase the staff-to-student ratio, therefore you are able to reduce your cost per student. The cost per student is what drives the tax rate.
Thank you, Oliver. Yes, Erica.
I just want to add to that, Oliver. There's got to be a sweet spot where you're, that I think she was asking about. You know, what's that number?
Instructionally, research says the sweet spot is between the mid-teens and the very low 20s. You go lower than the teens, low-tweak teens, you really reduce student performance. There's not enough mix, there's not enough fizz in the classroom. I mean, this is the broad research. And if you get past the early 20s, you're past 22 or something in the high 20s, you have a reduction because students have less individual attention and opportunity to relate to the instructor. So, you know, that's a broad research answer. It doesn't pertain to the specific case of you as a parent and the teacher you like in the classroom and who's in the classroom with your child. I mean, those are the personal and emotional anecdotal issues that, you know, voters face when they consider these issues. I would say that, I call your attention to the fact that there is a law mandating a class-size policy be adopted throughout the state, actually, by every school district. And there were recommended numbers in there, varying from kindergarten to high school, in the recommendation. And that was a tremendous struggle for all the boards in the WCSU that I serve to adopt. Actually, it wasn't a problem for those that don't operate a school, like Stratton, but anybody operating a school had problems with it. And the way we addressed that was that we put the numbers under administrative procedure. And therefore, based on recommendation of the board and the administration, you can adjust your class sizes and your allocation of resources, teachers and so forth, to have the maximum learning benefit. It's certainly not driven by the maximum efficiency in terms of student-teacher ratio. I'll assure you that, at least in the SU I serve.
Thank you. I think now it's eight o'clock. We'd like to get out of here around 8:30. I think, what do you have, Patty?
Well, I was going to ask a question. If anybody could speak to the, how the test scores in Newbrook have been affected with a higher student-teacher ratio? Because bigger is not always better. So I was just wondering if anyone could speak to that? If anyone has an analysis?
Well, you put the superintendent difficult spot when you want to call on comparing schools with a very small N and only one teacher in each grade level or one teacher for two grade levels. So I'll have to, I have to say that the Newbrook school students have been performing adequately. The recent S-Back test, which is a pilot and really not to be compared, I don't want to quote it. There was certainly a higher performance in language R, C.L.A., than there was math. At one time, this varies over time with any school. At one time, Newbrook received an award for having the highest scores on, I think it was NSRE. That's like three tests back when Mr. Garrel was the principal. But when I, when you ask me longitudinally whether I could compare those things, that's really difficult to say. I think what we should be paying attention to, if I can advise you, parents, is how does your child do and how do they grow in skills and performance over time, year to year? Because the individual student is what's really important to you in terms of value in education, and it is to your teachers and principal and superintendent. If we could look at all those and see that we are improving over time individually, that's much more important than worrying about the no-child-left-behind or the adequate yearly progress, which apparently in each S.A. has gone away. We do have some of the highest-performing schools in this state, in this SU, notably Dover and Wardsville. And that is due, I think, to a long-time investment in professional development and a continuity of instructional leadership. But I have very fine principals in other schools who certainly have been very commendably leading their instructional staff. And we don't have, they aren't moving from 144th in the state to 5th in the state, which is what Wardsville's managed to do in the past seven years.
Stephen, I want to mention class sizes here in Newbrook because they are, it's not like it's a...
I think I said that, okay. Oh, well, yeah, Emily points out. Don't be thinking, Newbrook has like 22 kids in a class or anything like that. We're talking about 17. They're in that mid-teens sweet spot in terms of their class. Although there is some exception. I think a kindergarten class is very big right now, 22, right? Kindergarten first grade or something.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
There's, yeah, kindergarten, there are two classes at Newbrook that are currently over 21 in stats. So they are large.
And actually, that's one of the reasons why, you know, they're very optimistic about future in Newbrook because they have students in the kindergarten, pre-K and so forth that are, you know, moving along. Yeah, I do, you know, you can certainly find line and see all the test scores you want to see if you want to be comparing schools. But keep in mind, some of these schools have very small numbers, and you will not find Wyndham on the list because Wyndham doesn't qualify in any way for sufficient number to be able to report reliably on the percentage of students having met proficiency.
Thank you, everybody, for your questions. I'm going to turn this now over to Stephanie again so that the board can present their four different scenarios. And then we'll hopefully field a few questions of those and wrap it up. And there may be around the afternoon.
What I'm hoping will happen is, maybe after each scenario is presented, we could do questions specific to that scenario, questions or comments, and then move to the next scenario if we go that way. Before we get to that, I just want to say, there's a couple of things I want everyone to remember as we look at the scenarios. First of all, in all four of the ones that we, that we're going to present tonight, just remember that in all four, Jamaica will no longer have a single school board that makes decisions only about JBS. So pretty much, we all have to wrap our heads around the fact that no matter what, we're going to have representatives on a larger board governing one school district with multiple schools. That's, you know, pretty much as you've heard what Act 46 is aiming at. So all four scenarios include that. Second thing to just remember is that, as Oliver said, all the towns in each new district have to have the same structure. So we all have to either be all pre-K through 12, all pre-K 8 with choice at high school, or whatever it is. We all have to be the same structure. And the third thing to remember is that everything we're presenting here is really fluid because the towns that Lady mentioned in the scenario we're talking about are also having meetings where they're discussing their options, and things are changing really a lot. So keep that in mind. This is what we can imagine right now. There may be other scenarios that haven't even shown themselves yet. So I'll turn it over to Tom.
To Heather.
I don't want to use that, but that's okay. You can hear me, right?
Oh.
Say yes. Okay. So we're going to do this first option. This is basically the red. I know I'm sure you guys remember the red. This is basically the same situation. This is where we keep JBS open. We have, we become one board for all five towns. We get our representation based on our population. We remain in the WCSU, and we keep Leland Gray as our serving high school. That's basically the no-change option. Just the combined board is a change. So could you, with this option, you wouldn't be able to do the at-large scenario for representation?
We're not laying out the exact way that we would be represented. These are pretty general scenarios. And as a town, as districts, we would then have to narrow down the exact type of representation aligned. So we're not, this is not addressing exactly how we'd be represented at all at this point, make it a little premature. We're just trying to, you know, see if this is the type that people want to go down.
Would this option include potential future merger with, you know, towns that you were exploring before or other local elements in the district?
Potentially that could happen, yes. It would be a decision that would be made by that larger board at some point in the future. But we vote on it, obviously. Yeah, we create a proposal, and then we go to our town to see if we wanted to merge and go to their town as well. And then if two towns agree, then we go from there.
One of the big advantages to this particular one is that the Red Committee spent a hell of a lot of time creating the groundwork and the foundation for this proposal. And I think when we stopped, we were at a point where it was time to look at some of the scenarios, how many people would get on the board? What do we, if we looked at the money, would it work out? So this particular one has a step up, perhaps a fairly large one.
If I could just mention, I was pretty excited about the idea of a central board because of the pre-K-12 alignment and purchasing of instructional materials as well as sharing instructional staff. I mentioned before, our social workers begun working in some of our WCSU elementary schools. And we would love to bring foreign language down to the youngest grades and be able to continue that throughout their years. It would be a very effective use of spreading resources and engaging students with the teachers who they remain with.
Okay, we'll talk about the second scenario. This would be forming a pre-K through six districts of Dover and Wardsville's district towns. In that scenario, we would keep JBS open. There would be one school board for all of the towns involved, so we'd be represented with some of Dover and some of Wardsville. We remain in the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, and we would offer school choice for grades 7 through 12. Now, the caveat of this is that in order to get out of the Leland Gray and get school choice for 7 through 12, we would need to get the votes of the other towns that are part of that union in order to do so. So they would all have to agree to let us out of that agreement, which could be a challenge.
By doing so, do we have financial obligation to getting out of this union with the Leland Gray? We are obligated for all debts, bonds, everything that we agreed to be part of. We'd have to come up with that and pay for that, wouldn't we?
Yes, they, yes. The short answer is yes, and the study would have to determine what the extent of that was.
How many students would be involved in this particular proposal?
You mean for the choice component of it or for all?
You mean for the choice component of it, or for all of it?
The three towns that you're talking about.
No, I don't have an exact number on that.
Because the minimum under Act 46 is 900 students.
Yeah, you don't have enough, and that's the benefit.
My understanding is that in a side-by-side district, that's not necessary.
Right.
That's correct.
Bill will say 220 elementary students.
So, wait, could I get a little clarification on that? What is, which one of those is right?
The both, depending on what you do.
Right, right, right. But if the...
The question is whether we need 900 students in this little district of Dover, Wardsboro, Jamaica, in order to qualify, or if in a side-by-side district, we're allowed fewer students.
That's correct. Those are understood.
And there's also, I mean, it's really important that you don't, too hung up on the numbers, I think, right now, because there's waivers available and all sorts of other things. In fact, if you go to the AOE website and click into the Act 46 linked to it, there's all kinds of information for all of you out there around some of the nuances around this law. So, I mean, it can happen, districts can, you just have to be able to merge with at least one other district.
Yeah, the 900 number applies to the supervisory district, or the supervisor, yeah, or the supervisory unit that has multiple school districts, but if you have a supervisory union, let's say with 900 or 1,000 students, you have to get down to the fewest practicable number of districts, and that's what I go back to, it's a merger of like with like.
So, as long as you have another school district to merge with, and in this case, they're talking about Dover and Wardsboro, as long as you have at least one other, you can be part of a side-by-side.
Is it unrealistic to ask the other towns amongst Leland Gray to take on the burden if Jamaica takes choice? The financial burden? I mean, is it unrealistic to propose something like that?
You don't have to buy me a list.
It's not illegal. If you're asking me to go, you know, to Newfane and say, hey, how about we have this deal where we let Jamaica go with its students out of the union, and then we pay for the school and maintain it without them? You know, it's not really very likely, I mean, the Union School District law was set up in a way where it's tough enough to get married, and it's even harder to get divorced.
And there's a reason for that as well.
But with the idea of this Act 46, and townships starting to talk about potential mergers anyway, would it be something that, you know, they may bring onboard another town?
Well, you asked me to, likely, I'm just, I'm wearing the hat of somebody in another town, I mean, you're speculating, and I think there's no reason not to talk.
Right, you know, I don't know, is that something that...
And I think it's important to note, it's not just asking the other four, it has to be all five towns voting, having a positive vote, it requires it in Jamaica as well, all five towns would need to be there.
When Tom brought this up, he said it might not be an easy thing.
Well, I know, and I wanted the opinion of these professionals, say, is it unrealistic, or is it realistic, or...
I think it's, you know, there's no way any of us could answer that question, it's a vote of the five towns, so I think that's the realistic part. But I also think it's really important to remember why Union School Districts are in place in the first place, and they came into being back in the 60s, and they really have been very, very effective for our state in the way we operate. So, we have merged districts, in fact, through Union High Schools and some elementaries as well, and it's been very, very useful. So, but one of the things that's made it effective is that there are no easy ways in and out, so there's stability there for those school districts, and it's really worked very well. And so, it's not just a, it's not just a community conversation, this is a statewide conversation.
And Wardsboro has already been opted out, but when was it that they...
Wardsboro actually did it at the, it's very complicated, and if you weren't around back in 1968 or so, which I was, but I was a little too young to remember all the details, but Wardsboro, I think, was one of the original ones who were in, but before they made the final decisions around what the Leland Gray Union School District were, they had some ins and outs, Newfane wasn't in the beginning, then they came in, so it was all kind of a, you know, but it was, since they did the five-town vote, no one's been in or out. Wardsboro has thought about it.
I just wanted to add, obviously, we thought about this as a board before we came to these possibilities. We've been really encouraged all along, as we read and learned about the Act, that this is the time to think creatively, and if making a change of that, of this sort, is what our town wants to do, we should at least pursue it, we should at least find the answers to the questions, form a committee and study it. It's a time when lots of changes are going to be happening all across the state, there may be towns that want to join the Leland Gray Union, and that may allow other towns to leave. There's a lot of shift, potential shifts happening. So, we wanted to, whether it's absolutely realistic or not, we wanted to have a good conversation and just see if this is really, you know, something that people are interested in learning more about. So, that's why we're bringing it to you, we're not confident that it, you know, that it will happen or not, but we just need to know what, how people feel about pursuing that as a possibility.
Yeah, Jen.
Just make some conversation about the possibility of the state legislating something so that the towns are able to pull out of unions. Does anybody know where that stands at this point, or is that not going to really happen?
No, Bill, to Emily's point, that's, by itself, it's not really a practicable solution, and I think it's, at this point, anyway, it's premature. This is, you know, a local and a regional conversation, and, you know, just to have a sort of a cart launch, something preemptively, you know, is something not in the cards.
I can speak, I have seen no draft legislation like that.
Let's go ahead and give the final two options, and then we'll hopefully have time for a few questions.
I just want to say that we were, we did not choose these options, she assigned them. So, this one is pretty complicated, but it involves joining a pre-K through 8 school district, that includes Floodbrook, that would involve keeping JBS, also the one school board for all the towns. This would be joining the Bennington-Rutland Supervisory Union, which is not the one in Central, and it would involve students for 7th and 8th grade attending Floodbrook, and then choice for 9th through 12. And again, it would require the vote from all the towns to have choice for that official. Has there been discussion with Floodbrook regarding this?
Yeah, Floodbrook invited us all, a couple of us went, and we just met with their, a couple of board members, it was very informal. They are in the middle of making all kinds of changes, they're joining, one of you might know specifically who they've joined with, but they're really moving ahead and forming a red, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, so they already formed a red a number of years ago, they were the first, and for a long time, the only red in the state, and it was basically five districts, so they had a Union Elementary School District, and then they had four individual town districts that dealt with the high school grades. They formed, in fact, Deb Linus is from the, I don't know if she's still here, oh, in the back, Deb was actually on the study, she's from Weston, was actually on the study committee for that red, so they created a red several years ago, they have since, as part of Act 46, they have joined a study committee with Manchester, Dorset, Danby, Mount Tabor, and Sunderland, I think I got them all.
So, their response to us, I would never say that they were courting us, they were just saying, you know, this is what we're doing, and if you guys are interested, we have, you know, we have some room here for 7th and 8th graders, they were very flexible, you know, come and talk to us, if you're interested, you can be on board. So, that was the gist of the conversation.
Do you know the exact number that they may be looking for for capacity?
At Floodbrook? They were, they said they could potentially take all of our kids, that would be, you know, extremely wrong to me for no ones, but they do have, I think it's about 65 or so empty seats, something like that, so they could, and they were, they were open to all possibilities.
Okay, why don't we finish the last scenario?
Kind of feel like this might be the least likely, maybe I'm not supposed to say that. So, the last one is for a pre-K through 12 school district, with Winhall and Stratton and some of the other towns that they're in talks with, I always thought everybody might be one of them. So, this would involve closing JBS, which we would have to go on as a town to do. One school board would be formed for all of the towns involved, and then we would join a newly-formed supervisory union, so there's no supervisory union, well, they all have their own supervisory unions, Stratton is with us, so these schools would form their own supervisory union, it'd be brand-new, and then that would, and then we would do choice for all students for pre-K through 12.
Go ahead, do you want to fill in some details?
My guess is, if this ever happened, Winhall and Stratton would become part of, really, Winhall's already part of BRSU, Stratton probably would become part of the BRSU as a merged district, Sandgate would probably, if all things happened the way the dominoes would fall, would then come into BRSU and become part of Stratton and all Sandgate BRSU, newly-merged district, and all be part of the BRSU.
So, BRSU would be a side-by-side district, and you guys would have...
BRSU would be an alternative supervisory union, and within that alternative supervisory union would be a new K-12 non-operating district with pre-K through 12 choice, made up of, currently would be Winhall, Stratton, and possibly Sandgate. And if you folks became a K-12 non-operating district, K-12 choice, and you wanted to become part of the BRSU, you could then come and play with us.
Can you identify a couple of who you are?
Yeah, I'm Mike, I'm the vice chair of the Winhall School District, and this is Scott Pashy, he is the chair of the Winhall School District.
And I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to, well, I do want to help you make a decision on this one. I wouldn't do it. That right there is a pain, it is a pain. You can't even imagine the pain that my town is going through trying to align with this Act 46, because we are a non-operating school district, I mean, it is what we chose, but it's a pain. I would, for you folks from Jamaica, I would throw that one right in the garbage, don't even consider it. It's really tough, because it just, for us, I mean, being a non-operating district is wow, it's rugged.
Do you want to, and I'm sorry that we got that wrong, I had the latest information I have from Stratton, but obviously, things have been changing pretty quickly. Are there anything else you want to add?
Well, you want to tell me why you think it's rugged?
Yeah, I mean, it just, it'd be, well, I don't, I don't really make a whole lot of friends. I've been on the school board for 16 years, and I know several people here, we used to be in the Central Supervisory Union, and I have some real issues with the way schools set tuition rates, the way they're not held accountable to hold their stuff down, but we, as a board from a non-operating school district, are required to hold our title budget to a certain percentage, which is very hard when you have schools that just want to go, go, go with their tuition rate. Now, our town votes on all of its tuition rates. Trying to get them to understand what needs to happen is a big challenge, and it just, it's huge. Tonight, we had one of our very first budget meetings, looking at our budget, which is, it's tough, I mean, we argued through, fought, carried on like we usually do, and we have issues with it, we really do, I mean, we're struggling to make to stay under the cap that they have set forth as far as a percentage rate. Having choice is a great thing, no one school fits every kid, everybody knows that, that is just the way it is. But to get your community to come together and decide what you're going to pay the schools, you think you have splits in your community now? You'll have some big splits if you do this, it just, this is hard, this is really hard.
Well, let me ask you something. Now, from where you are, would you reverse? Would you say join in with Jamaica and come to the Jamaica Elementary School?
I would, but my town never would, because they, once you have choice, your folks will never go back, and rightly so.
It doesn't have to speak for itself, though.
Well, yeah, but most folks don't sit on that school board, struggling with, how do you cut? We need to cut 130,000?
133,000, yeah.
Out of our budget, and the only thing we do is pay tuition and run school buses, that's it. Not sure where we're going to cut it, but it's coming out of there somewhere, and that's, I think it's worth it.
But towns, people knowing that, are still willing to keep...
Yes, and I'll tell you why, and this is the biggest problem with a full-choice district, and that is, the parents who want us to, the parents who want tuition, they will vote for a higher tuition, because it is cheaper in the tax, it is cheaper to pay a higher tax than it is to pay the tuition out of your pocket.
What it.
So, if we reduce the tuition, not even to the, to this union average, but below what, somewhere between what the school asks for, or what we think we can afford, and what the parents want, that gap is greater out of the parents' pocket than what the tax rate increase would be to cover that gap. So, there's a vested interest in the community to pay the higher tuition, which raises the tax rate.
And the other thing, you were talking before, somebody had a question about transportation, and that becomes a big, major factor when you decide to go with a system like this. We do, we bus to five different schools, we run two school buses, and it is not required by law, as Dr. John said, I mean, you don't have to do it, but a lot of your people, you'll be geographically challenged to come up with a way to move your kids because of, because just of the structure of the system, and that in itself, that also leads to this big whopping part of your budget, that's nothing but school buses, drivers, so on and so forth. I probably shouldn't knock our system, but I got to tell you, I mean, if I was you guys coming in on the ground floor, this is not the one that I would consider, I just, I really wouldn't, I think it just sets you up for a lot of headache, and it's just not worth it, your lives are too short.
The other thing you need to think about, when you're a non-operating district, and your only budget, the only thing you really budget for is really tuition, and then you have to take a basketball every year and say, well, how many kids are we going to have?
Yes.
You know, there's, because there is no place in your budget to go find money if more kids show up, because if you have a school and more kids show up, you put them in a seat and it costs you a textbook, because, I mean, you already paid for the teacher, you already paid for the heat, you already paid for all that stuff, but when a kid shows up in Winhall, it costs $15,000 every time a kid shows up, and that's a penny and a third on the tax rate, every time one of those little buggers shows up. So, when we budget, we have to figure out, how many kids do we think are going to come after we make the budget?
And if you have choice, they will come.
And they will come, right, so every year, we figure, okay, we think that there are 12 kids that are going to graduate, and we figure it's going to be like seven kindergarten kids, so we got to figure, okay, so that's plus five, but we know that's not really plus five, so we have to build in like 15 phantom kids at $15,000, because we now figure, okay, that's really 10 kids. This year, we had 20 kids come in and 10 kids leave. Luckily, we budgeted for 10 kids. But what happens if you don't? What happens if you budgeted for seven kids? Now, that's $45,000. We have to find $45,000 in the budget, otherwise, we have a deficit. Now, when, if four kids show up in Jamaica, you just put those little butts in those little seats, and you buy four textbooks, that's it, that's the difference.
Okay, thank you very much.
I would like to say that it really does cost us the state average for every student that does come to Jamaica, and it's not as if it just costs $25, you technically have to be done, so, you know, and I, very disappointed, I have to see Rich Warner here from Dover, he promised he's going to come, but do you... And I did, I, very disappointing, I asked you Rich Warner here from Dover, he had promised he was going to come, but do you, do you want to say anything about? Because I, you know, there's, there's full choice like you guys have, then there's, I'd like to hear more after the study committees to find out more about other levels of choice where it's just nine, twelve, whatever.
I can just say with our experience, it's not, you know, as dire as Scott expresses, but you know, it's part of responsible budget. You know, you look at the system you have, you learn about it, you figure it out and you, just like anybody does. So I don't think it's any obstacle that you can't overcome. I think there's ninety-three schools, districts in Vermont that have some.
Excuse me, could he use the microphone, windows?
Oh, yeah. Start again.
So I've been the principal at Dover, which is a K-six and we have choice seven through twelve. And I would just say that it's, because you're not on the extremes of not having a school at all, you just responsibly budget over time. You don't look year to year, you look long-term and you adjust to the environment that is created when people move in or people move out. I don't think it's an obstacle that can't be overcome and I don't think it doesn't create new challenges that you have to look at. So I don't think it's. I don't think it's on either extreme, I would say.
How do you want to proceed? Okay, yes.
I just have a question, for seven through twelve, aren't we paying Leland and Gray near fifteen thousand students to go there? So if we paid to go somewhere else, it wouldn't be any different?
Yeah, I'm going to let someone.
Isn't it like cheaper, some of the schools are even less, like thirteen?
But you see, we're, yeah.
I mean, you are part of the Leland and Gray Union School District, so depending on how many students they have there, what the costs are and what the Leland and Gray budget, which you vote on, is voted. That's what determines what Jamaica's share is based on how many students you send there of the total cost for the school.
Right, but I'm just making a point that we pay for these students.
Yes, I under, yeah, you're, you're correct. I mean, you pay for students, there's no free lunch out there. I mean, you pay for students one way or the other. I think that what Scott and Marty were perhaps saying is that when, keep in mind, when you do have choice, then the school board really does not have control over the cost. And, and there is an economy of scale that they envy that other operational school districts have, that you don't have with, you know, when, when it's choice everywhere and you're just paying tuition. The other thing Bill would probably corroborate is that at one of the recent town meetings at Dover, because the majority of the people wanted to send their kids to Burn Burton, or a lot of parents were interested in that opportunity. A bunch of people showed up at town meeting, registered voters, they made sure there was an article in there saying to pay, you know, a higher rate for Burn Burton. And when they voted, then they left the meeting, they got what they needed, that's what they wanted out of the school district. And, and see, and then the board can't say anything about that because it's choice. So that, that's some, you know, you, there, there are issues of control and responsibility and planning, as Bill says, it isn't something you can't, you can cope with that by just adding it to your budget, right, next year. But, and also the boards are only in choice obliged to pay statewide average. But if your local town decides at town meeting to vote more, so be it, that too has control, local control. So that's, that's a, that's a variable that the school, school board really can't, can't control, it's in the people's hands. Yep, and, well, I was going to, I brought that up because the declared tuition for any public school can be above the statewide average. Obviously, the statewide averages of all the public schools, so it can be above or below. And the private independent school could also be above or below that average.
Confused yet? Yes, John.
Or the Act forty-six committee, under school choice, could I send my son or daughter to any school in the world? Or is there a limit? Is there a, is there a boundary? Does it have to be an American school, a New England school? Would you pay the state average anywhere?
My understanding of that is that it's up to the town or the district to decide whether, because I think Winhall, if I remember right, at one point was agreed to pay tuition anywhere. And then, and then eventually realized that wasn't now, changed it.
Seven through twelve, you, you are required to pay tuition to any school that is approved by the approving agency of that, of that area.
And the state board.
And the state board. So, I mean, if you, if a parent wants to send their school to, to a student, to a school in France, if that school is approved by the French approving agency and by the state board of Vermont, then that child can go. But you only, they only, the only thing the school board pays is the approved tuition by the community, by the Winhall community. They don't pay for, they don't pay for anything else, they don't pay room, board, books or anything like that.
And nor provide a budget.
If the community had said, we're not paying more than statewide average for any tuition, then that's the amount that would be sent to this.
What we voted are out-of-state tuition rates is state average, that's what it is. We don't pay any more than that.
Yes, thank you.
This isn't really a question, but it's just something that I think the committee members should, when they form the committee, is also think of the impacts for special ed. I'm sure that there are some very complicated impacts on special ed in this, in any of these choices other than number one, so. But it's, I don't think it's something we have time to deal with here.
Right, I invited Abby Dillon to come tonight, in case people had questions about that, she, she's not here. Hopefully, that's something that the study committees can look into more. I'm sorry, I had invited Abby Dillon here to talk about special ed. I know you're a good person to talk about that also, if people had specific questions, it's a little late now. But certainly, the study committee, you know, if they need to look into that question.
As far as I'm concerned, you can wrap it up.
I see a lot of questions still.
I'm, I'm sticking around if you want to ask questions.
Okay. Sure, we'll take about three more questions and then we'll let them, Jen.
Um, Stephanie, will this be a talk before I extend some questions that the study committees, I suppose, are going to be answering so that we have, you know, so that each committee has, has apples and apples and oranges that is there?
We could provide an exact set of questions. I, the way I've worked it out so far in my mind was basically pros, cons and potential consequences of each, of each scenario. And that, you know, we would all be working on that, trying to find the answers for each scenario of those questions. But we could be more specific if that was helpful.
Well, I think, I think more specific would be helpful, for instance, someone just brought up special ed. And if, you know, if going to other schools, you know, we need to have the question of are they going to accept all of our students? Or are they, you know, what are the costs for special ed, will they accept our special ed kids?
Right.
That one has to be specific.
Excuse me?
That one has to be specific.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we need some specific questions so that we make sure that if we vote on this, we actually are doing ourselves, are doing ourselves a disservice.
Right, absolutely.
Stephanie, can I?
Go ahead. Okay, you want to?
Well, I just want to assure everybody that the, the process the board has just undertaken, including this meeting, is part of a lot of discussion, getting to an eventual vote or eventual choice of, of things to decide upon. The study that is, the study grant is just that I'm supposed to apply for now tomorrow, based on the board's direction. Actually, these consultants that are provided by VisVid and State, AOE, supported by the State O E, they, they have a structure and a template that includes all of these variables. So we are certain at some point subsequent to a study that we are comparing comparable issues across the various choices. Now, we may not get there under the first initial exploratory grant of five thousand dollars, but if the board decides to explore one or two other options through a formal twenty thousand dollar Act forty-six study, you can be sure that not only will the answers, the questions be answered for now, but for five years hence. And it'll be compared, all the parameters will be compared consistently across all your choices. That's, that's really critically important, because you can't be expected to vote on something you don't know what you're getting into.
Thank you, Susan.
As one who loves to teach in public schools, because I think public education is the last testament of democracy, I'm feeling a little dense. Because I, it seems to me although this act is designed to increase equity, if it allows more choice, I don't get that, I don't get it. I mean, as it is now, I mean, Oliver's on the board, board of Burn Burton, so that's a ten to one ratio, at least on their website. Whereas, okay, so if you go to Burn Burton, if you have that choice, if you happen to live in that little spot of real estate and, you know, this act will allow more people to do that, then you can go to a school where you have a ten to one, not a twenty-one to one student ratio. You are, your spending is whatever your spending is and you don't have to take the standardized test. I don't understand how that increases equity.
So can I just briefly respond to that? There's nothing in this act that changes the school choice.
Well, but they had two choices up there that allowed choice, I mean, they had two.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is there's, there's nothing that changes the process. They could go through what they're doing right now without Act forty-six. That there's nothing that's changed that. It's just important to understand that, it's not, Act forty-six hasn't changed.
It's, it's completely neutral on the issue and I think the reality is cross-state, you're going to see things go in different directions. We already saw up in Westford and Essex with that particular merger, Westford actually gave up, they relinquished school choice in favor of moving into the larger district with Essex. So again, Act forty-six is, doesn't, doesn't affect anything.
And I would just like to say, you know, as a resident of Jamaica and a parent of students that goes to both JBS and Leland and Gray, that school choice isn't for a lot of people just about, well, this is going to be a better college opportunity for my kid going to this school versus this school. But it's also about, my students not succeeding at this school and therefore I need to look for other opportunities. And I know a lot of students, I know a lot of students have succeeded at Leland and Gray, but I know a lot haven't as well. There's been a lot of dropouts, there's been a lot of people who failed. And what can Leland and Gray do to be a better school? And I think that this is an opportunity not only for Jamaica to look at what's best for their community, but for Leland and Gray and the district to look at what's, what they can do to attract Jamaica and everybody else.
Thank you. Okay, before anybody else leaves, I'm going to make sure we kind of talk about the last page of your packet. So thank you, everybody, for coming out and I hope that you've learned a lot. And I very much hope that you will want to be a member of one of the study committees that's going to research these scenarios. I think I've already gotten this out, but we do plan to form a committee for each scenario and they're, the committees are going to be somewhat formal in how they're going to have to warn their meetings. They're going to have an elected chair and they'll take basic meeting minutes of the meetings so that we can all keep posted on what the committees are doing. And each committee will have a JBS board member as a participant, but not chair of the committee. They're mainly going to be made up of new folks. And we, if we have enough people signed up, we may also have a communication committee so that we can keep as much information out there for everybody as possible and make it timely. Our goal, this is ambitious, is that the committees will meet several times, beginning in the first or second week of January and, and have something to report by our February board meeting. That's pretty ambitious, but not any kind of final, final report or anything, but just a, you know, a beginning. And we're hoping to have something significant to say at town meeting day. And after that, we'll have steps including eventually hearing a full reports from the committees, that will be another public meeting like this, is what we're envisioning right now. Eventually having some kind of questionnaire that after we hear the reports of the committees, that we can maybe narrow down our choices. And eventually having a vote. As I said before, it's not likely to happen before November, it could be a lot longer than that. We will keep you updated and we hope that you're going to participate as much as possible.
Can I just ask one quick question, I'm starting to interrupt. But if there's one choice or two choices in here that absolutely nobody signs up to be on a committee, are we taking that as?
No, in fact.
I'm going to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we will at this point. So the last page of Seattle piece of paper on your packet is a place for you to put any questions or comments. Please do mark off if you're a Jamaican resident or not. If you have a question you want to answer, make sure you tell us how to contact you. And if you would like to sign up to be on a committee, put that there, how to contact you. You don't have to say which committee you want to sign up, you want to be part of. I've heard a number of people say they're purposely wanting to be on a committee that maybe they're not, that's not their favorite option, because they want to learn more, which I think is great. And would just lend a lot of, a lot of weight, you know, if committees are really diverse. So you can say which committee you want to be on, or you can just say, I'll be on any committee and we'll try to make sure we have a balance of numbers of people on each committee. So fill this out tonight if you can and leave it in, there's a basket back there, you can just drop it in there and we will be in touch with you as soon as we can. And we thank you very much for coming and for caring about.